We are ready.
Oh, we are ready? Oh, we're not waiting for matter mechanical? The matter of course.
Okay.
Well, okay, this is the city council meeting for the city of Bonnie Lake for the day of June 28, 2022, six o'clock. Let's stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Okay, pardon, pardon the mask. I did catch a little bit of that COVID a couple of weeks ago. And so I'm just being careful. If you cannot hear, you just tell me and I will speak with. All right, now we have a roll call. Madam, please call roll queen.
Before I take roll, did that work? Before I take roll, I just wanted to let everybody know we're down to one owl. So please speak up and try to face it when you're talking. Thank you. Mayor Metella.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Councilmember McLean.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Here.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any agenda modifications. Oh, we do. Here with that thing. Twenty-two ninety-four. Okay, I did, I just heard that we do have an agenda modification. That would be on item E of the consent agenda. That'd be A B twenty-two ninety-four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bonnie Lake here in Washington, amending ordinance numbers nine point zero one point zero one zero and nine point zero three zero one zero of Bonnie Lake municipal code and repealing chapter nine point one two of Bonnie Lake municipal code. Any discussion on the matter? Any votes? All say aye. Any opposed?
We're just moving.
All right, yeah, well, and now we, okay, so it has been moved to the full council agenda. And now we have presentation from planning and building supervisor Jason Sullivan of Kent Florida with Ms. Bolton.
Is the, is the mic picking me up?
Not very well.
No, no, yeah.
There you go.
All right. Good evening, council. Jason Sullivan, planning and building supervisor for the city of Bonnie Lake. Back in November of 2021, the city council passed resolution twenty-nine ninety, twenty-nine ninety-four directing the city staff to begin negotiating a development agreement with Chris Lear and his, Chris Lear's development team regarding a development called the Peak Four Ten, which included the Far Compass Point site owned by the city of Bonnie Lake. The point of tonight's presentation is to brief the council what we've been up to since November of last year, provide a roadmap of where we're going and kind of give a brief overview of the project. No action or direction is expected tonight. We simply, with the change of council between November and this year, wanted to provide some background information, let the council know where we were at and the critical next steps for this project. So just some perspective, this project is located in East Town. The area was annexed into the city in oh-two. In oh-five, we adopted the initial subarea plan. There was an update about four years later to deal with some grammatical errors and just refocusing it. In 2016, we did a significant update and really began to focus the East Town area on light industrial, light manufacturing uses and really began to identify the area as somewhere that we wanted to identify as a countywide manufacturing industrial center in order to support family wage jobs here in the city of Bonnie Lake. In 2017, we really started to see this come off the ground. The Fennel Creek Industrial Park was developed, which is the Teeter Building and a second building, which includes Carlisle, which is a manufacturing steel plant, or not manufacturing steel plant, manufacturing aluminum roof plant. They stamp aluminum roofing. We also have the Fennel Creek, I'm sorry, the East Town Industrial Park, which is, has SC, SCJ, which is a fencing contractor, sorry, SCS, which is a fencing contractor that relocated out of Seattle. They liked Bonnie Lake a little bit more than South Seattle, so they relocated all their three or four different locations within South Seattle to Bonnie Lake and have been operating out of that. And then we also have what we call the ACB flex office space, which is right at two thirty, thirty, and four ten. There's about four buildings and they have a variety of small startup businesses that need a little bit of manufacturing space and storage space, but are not big enough to take down the warehouse. In 2021, the city council adopted an ordinance to kind of really focus the zoning out there to support light industrial, light manufacturing use. And then November of that year, the city council directed us to begin to negotiate this development agreement. So here is kind of a quick site plan of what we've been working on with Chris Lear and his development team. He's assembled a team of crumbax engineers, wetland biologists that are kind of some of the top in the field to really put together a development that will put the East Town on the map as a light industrial manufacturing area. This is a partnership between the city of Bonnie Lake and what we call the RCL site to form what is called the Peak Four Ten Business Park. The city, the city property is approximately 20 acres. Under the development agreement, there'd be a separate purchase and sales agreement that would be acted upon prior to approval of the development agreement, which would transfer the property ownership. There's also the RCL site, which has already been assembled and in full ownership, and it's another 30 acres. So together, it makes up a 50-acre business park site right in the heart of East Town, which would change the area from kind of the rural setting it is to the light industrial manufacturing that's been envisioned for probably the last four or five years. So this is kind of a brief, kind of a quick view of the site plan. You see there, there's about five buildings. They are all large, large buildings, but can be subdivided to accommodate multiple uses. So kind of roughly what is the project? It's about 850,000 square feet of high-quality industrial buildings with also office space. They are extra tall buildings on the backside. They're going to be terraced. There's a slope from the north to the south, which is going to allow for the backside of the building to have a 60-foot clear ceiling height, but on the front side, it looks like a one or two-story building. So we're kind of playing with some grades there so that you're getting to have from four-ten, not as much visual impact, but still get those high ceiling heights that some of the industrial users want. Because of the sale and this location, we are expecting to have national potential for relocations. We're close enough to Sumner and close enough to, to the ports in Tacoma that it still makes sense. The drive times from here and from Auburn are about the same. So we are close enough, and then four-ten is also considered a freight route, so we're kind of perfectly positioned. Because there's also the smaller flex office spaces going in, it's also a way to support local business owners as they develop their business. So the whole goal of this project is to create kind of the third leg of our economic development. We've done a great job with our retail and service industries. We pretty much have captured that market for the plateau. What we don't have is a lot of the family wage jobs that people could stay in the city so they could work, live, and play in the community. And this is a great opportunity to capitalize on that. We're expecting 700 new jobs in the city. As I said, we're expecting those to be family wage jobs. Some of the not project, but city benefits that would be coming out of this project is significant infrastructure improvement. The project will be constructing the roundabout on four-ten and two-twenty-four, the frontage road on the north side, and all the frontage improvements along four-ten from the Compass Point side all the way to almost the, oh, the, the old Biggie Nurseries, that red building out there. So all of that would basically be frontage improvements, curved gutter sidewalk, and underground utilities. Well, they will be extending, so this is one huge benefit for, for the city, is they will be extending the sewer line from the listation at 96 to two-thirty-third, which means that that, the sewer list, pump station that the council built probably eight or nine years ago, will become live, and all buildings in East Town will be required to connect to sewer. So that will be all new rate payers, all the latecomers that are required to be paid will be coming in. And so the project is extending the sewer a couple thousand feet past its project to tie into two-thirty-third. We're also going to be extending the water system from a scrap premise on 96, looping it through the site and coming back onto four-ten, which will complete that huge infrastructure project. And finally, and I forgot to put it up there, they, as part of the development agreement, the developer will also be constructing the decant facility on the city property off of 96. So the way that the development agreement is structured will provide the design, the developer will, the developer of the project will construct that decant facility and then gift it or donate it back to the city of Bonnie Lake. So kind of the timeline, as I said, council passed the resolution in November of last year. We've been working diligently. This has been, and I will have to give a huge shout out to Chris and his team. Every time we thought we solved another problem, another problem popped up. We were on today to be, trying to figure out a wetland issue that just kind of came out of nowhere that we weren't expecting. So there's been lots of going back and forth, and it's been worked on in a very collegial manner, understanding that what the developer needs, but also what the city needs, and trying to find a project that benefits both the developer, the developer and the city and the community. So that's why it's taking a little bit of time. We thought it would be pretty straightforward, and then we dug into all the different codes and infrastructure requirements, and back and forth, it's taken a little bit longer, but we're getting really close to having a complete draft development agreement to present to the city council. Currently, we're expecting the CEPA application will be completed here in the next week. So that we can get the CEPA review completed, this will allow us to present the draft development agreement and have an executive session on the purchase and sales agreement on August 2nd. August 9th, we'll have a public hearing on the development agreement as part of state law. Under our process, then the following workshop, the council discusses public testimony, and then we're hoping to take final action on both documents at the August 23rd, 2020 meeting. The build-out is for a five-year build-out, so by 2028, or 2026, I think we said, 2026, 2027, the project will be complete. So lots of, lots of moving parts. There's lots of development agreement. I think we're going to, right now, 32 pages. So lots of finer details, and I'm sure when we present the development agreement, there'll be lots of questions about all the fine details. But we really did try to find a project that created a maximum total benefit to the city while also providing a huge economic benefit to the city, not, not just saying the sales tax alone from the infrastructure. There's any questions? I can, I can.
Oh, Congressman, Councilmember Evans.
I appreciate the upgrade. I'm not a, people like me. A quick question here. With, with what the developer is willing to put in, do you have kind of a ballpark cost of what that is?
14 million.
That's, that's outside of, that's just the infrastructure upgrades and all that stuff? Okay. So that's 14 million privately funded versus 23 million publicly funded?
Who knows what the business coming at?
30 million publicly funded?
Yeah, who knows what the business?
I just wanted to put that out there that, I know, I know there's been some heartburn about a potential sale price and all that kind of stuff, but overall, a $14 million impact that does hit the city bottom line is huge.
And all the latecomers that come back.
Right.
So once the sewer line kicks on, like the SCS project across the street has to connect within six months and pay their latecomers. The ACB buildings, all four of those buildings would have to connect within six months. They've all signed agreements when they built, knowing that that's something. So they, they know it's coming. But all that latecomers that the city was looking to recoup from the cost of the lifting, that's an additional couple million dollars that would be coming in to the city's copper as a result of the project to pay back the utility fund for the construction.
And a decant facility.
And a decant facility.
All right, thank you.
That, Councilman Bolton, if you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty exciting. I, I'm very thankful that this is coming to fruition. I do have a question, though. Could you elaborate a little bit more on what the public hearing on the line?
By state law, we're required to hold a public hearing and take testimony on the development agreement. So we would, and that's, there's a public hearing, it would be with the city council. People, just like we are doing tonight with the TIP, people could come up and make testimony regarding the development agreement. Under the city council's rules, that testimony, if any, would be discussed at the next meeting, and then the council would take that.
Okay, I think just my main concern is, you know, I sometimes feel like residents don't necessarily feel heard. And I, I do feel that in trying to advertise and let people know that there is a public hearing that's available, I don't know if there's anything more that's going to be, you know, put out to the community to let them know to come and discuss what is going on.
We're timing the notice of the public hearing to coincide with our CEPA work so that we will be putting, we will email, we have a list of about 450 people that have signed up to have, we received email notices from us. They will all get an email with both the CEPA work and the public hearing date. Everybody within 300 feet of that area
Yeah.
will get a notice mailed to their house. And then it'll be posted on the city's website. It will be posted on all city locations. And as I said, like I said, we email, the people who are, who have been ever interested in anything planning related, we've got 450. I know it's not the whole city, but we do email them and say, here's a notice.
Okay.
There's a notice of the public hearing.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Sullivan, obviously, I'm not functioning on all my cylinders. I'm about four, five out of six. So, but, so I'm going to save my subsequent questions for a little bit later. But the, the one I was wondering about, you know, this has been characterized as light industrial warehousing. What, what precisely are we looking for as far as traffic?
So what we have out there right now and what we're looking for in the future is, SCS is a good example. They do fencing, fencing manufacturing, security fencing, manufacturing, and installation. So if people want to spear both, how your typical chain link, security fencing, or, you know, decorative, decorative security fencing, they manufacture it and, and weld it and, and sell it and install it. Carlisle is a, as I said, a roofing manufacturing. So they bring in sheet metal and stamp out metal roofing for commercial buildings that can get sold in, like, Teeter does inclined chairs. Their corporate headquarters are out there, along with their warehousing and distribution facility. We have a, I think, a car wrapping place out there that wraps cars in big, you know, the sticky car wraps that you see on cars now. Over in the ACB, we have a number of different businesses from a couple, I think, carb, like a hot rod shop that does car, like, the custom cars for like movie theaters, movies. We've got an engineering company out there that's starting to do work, you know. Oh, yeah, the, the manufacturing of products for welding for the big oil rigs. So it, it's really that kind of light industrial, so you're not getting the whole smoke stacks and big pollution and big noise because it's all contained typically within things. And the code that the city council wrote last year was designed to accommodate these types of uses. So the code and these uses that were expected to come out, that's why we're saying family, or family wage jobs, so the light manufacturing, the light warehousing, those types of jobs that really support people able to work with the community.
Well, my concern would be more along the line of traffic that would be, that would be with not only all of the extra employees and all of the people on that output that the, that the light industry is doing. Has, has there been any talks with the state about expanding four-ten to accommodate this?
Because we're doing a traffic study right now. So that's part of the CEPA work that we're now, where we're kind of finalizing, engaging in, is looking at all the traffic impacts and how they would be mitigated. The nice thing is, for four-ten, actually, the peak flow in the PM is typically out four-ten, and in the AM, it's in on four-ten. So if you, if you think about it, most of the cars in the morning are driving from East Town into the city, and in the evening, they're driving from the city into East Town. Nice thing about doing the commercial development in East Town is the commute is reversed. The cars are going out to East Town in the morning, and things are happening in East Town during the day, and at night, they're coming back into the city. So it's a reverse commute from our standard peak PM hour. So that's one nice thing is it's not adding to the peak PM hour of trips that are going out toward East Town.
Are we expecting the, that, the track would be done about the same time as the CEPA review?
It will be all done at the same time. So we have, and we, and Chris and his team have been engaged, and our team has been engaged with the Washington State Department of Transportation because it is their road, it's their roundabout, two-twenty-four. So we have been engaged with that to make sure that the traffic impacts are mitigated.
Oh, Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really impressed what Chris Zern and his company have done to help meet our needs out there, overcome some challenges. Pressed to this on our own will be very expensive, obviously, and a challenge for us to make happen to put all together. There's a lot of the opportunities out there to help buy property, pick it all in one big group and stuff out there. So I appreciate what they've done and needing the right mix for future development. You did mention about a frontage road. That was my concern was before we talked about that, and he told us that the trucks would not easily make a turnout there with the frontage. I didn't see it on your picture.
Yeah, so what, yeah, I can, let me go back.
That's what I'm hoping we keep it in there.
Yeah, we, 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 like I said, there was lots of Rubik's cubes that we fixed and solved. So the frontage road that we, we kept was, we brought the one all the way over to here. So that this site will be able to come down and connect to the frontage road that brings them directly into the roundabout. They'll have a right in, right out, and left in here. That's always been planned, which also connects over to this property eventually. This, so this site, this property could come out this way. And so there's also a future road that extends out to 96 from here. As part of this project, Chris will be, it's kind of a little by little dot here, but Chris will be dedicating that right of way. And then there's another chunk of right of way that's getting dedicated here for a future road that goes out to 96. So the backbone of the frontage road is still there. We were able to make it work. The only site that we kind of removed it was from this one because these, these trucks that would need a frontage road can get to the frontage road through the parking lot. So it still has the same purpose, it's just not a separate road.
And we still have connection to the back side also?
There will be one, yeah, there will be right here. It's over here. Only a little bit of this site has it. He's dedicating that right. And then there's another frontage road that basically runs right through here. And we, Chris is dedicating that section of that right of way that would provide the connections.
Thank you. All right, uh, oh, Councilmember McLean, McLean, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the frontage road, do we have, we're going to have to amend some zoning for that? Is, is that what's going to have to happen?
No, I forget when we briefed the city council. I think it was back in May or April of last year. There was a question about how we could deal with the frontage road. The nice thing is with the development agreement, it allows us to make that amendment through the development agreement so that we can do it. That was part of what kickstarted the development agreement discussion, was the code that, that allows you to make a change to the requirement in chapter, I think it's 12. This is, you have to follow the frontage road plan as prescribed. We can modify that standard through the development.
And I have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sure. And why a roundabout? That is, we did, we did an intersection control analysis. That is what the preferred solution is. And as, as we've said before, four-ten, their preferred solution for four-ten all the way to Edenclaw is roundabouts.
And, and they would be washed out?
They would be, in this case, it would be a washout intersection paid for by the developer as part of the construction. And yeah, the big one is it provides the U-turn, thanks, Chris.
And which I was wanting to verify that, but my talking with, with washout and all of that, like, the presumption now was only to be rounded for any intersection.
And unlike, and unlike the two-twenty, the two-four-ten and four-ten intersection, we don't have the same level of pedestrian activity
Yeah.
out here. And it does, as he, as Chris mentioned, it does provide the U-turn because it's a divided highway. So without the roundabout, you'd have to drive all the way down to two-thirty-third to use the round, the turnaround down there. But it's blocked, turn around, so it serves a couple purposes. And it's been designed for the, the heavy truck, track truck, truck truck, truck traffic that would be deused.
Now, is that where the four lanes go back, go into two lanes?
No, it would still be four lanes all the way through the roundabout. And I think there's a slip lane that drops to provide access to the properties themselves.
And Councilman Bolton, do you have a question?
Yeah, I believe that this was the property that they were discussing, where we were asking about the, the right to assemble, if we were going to allow for like little, so was that zoning changed so that if, if, like, one of the businesses wanted to allow for a church to come in or a brewery or whatever?
The council adopted, yeah, it's whatever's allowed currently in the zoning code. I think the only, like a cow back, the only prohibition that Chris has agreed to is no adult entertainment facilities.
Okay, perfect.
But all other zoning uses as allowed, I believe, are still standard.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I believe you probably have to think a little bit later. Okay, we do, we do have a public hearing tonight. Madam, please, would you read?
This is a public hearing on adopting the 2023-2028 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. City clerk's office has received no communication as it relates to this public hearing.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing. This is your time to address the council on the item under public hearing. You have five minutes. If you do approach, please state your name and address for the record when called upon. Does anybody wish to approach on, on this particular subject for a public hearing? Okay, having nobody.
You have two that signed up.
We do have two that signed up. Are, are they online?
No.
But Mr. Charbonneau?
Not, not on that subject.
Oh, not on that subject? So that, okay. Anybody on this? So we don't have anybody on? Okay, now we're moving on to citizen commentary, and this is your time to address the council on the city business. Again, you have five minutes. When you get to the lecture, please state your name and address. And so Scott Charbonneau, could you say?
Correct. Scott Charbonneau, seven-two-one-four, 194th Avenue East, Bonnie Lake. Resident for 30 years. Just going to concern Allen New York Park. The boat launch, nobody's manning the launch. People are leaving the locks undone because they're so hard to unlock and lock. So they just leave it down because they can't get it locked back up. There were three police there Saturday. They just got off the boat, and there was another one there. Felt sorry for them because it was a mess down there. And their comment was, that's not our problem. That's what the city wanted. Okay? Did we not spend thousands of dollars on pillars for that boat launch? Where, what happened to that? Placards was the other thing. The launch, you have to get a placard to launch to get the code to unlock the things. There's kayakers and paddleboarders that are plugging up boat launch, and they don't have placards. They just pull up, take 30 minutes to 45 minutes to take their kayaks off, load them back up. I feel so they should have to get placards also if they're going to use it. The docks, people fishing on the docks, I kind of understand that one, that they want to fish and stuff like that. But yesterday, went down there, and there was lawn chairs, towels, coolers, because the park was so full, they were all just out on the boat launch docks. It made it hard. Yesterday, where the, there's a stoking lane for boats that are supposed to park on the gravel, waiting to get into the launch area. It's all posted signs and everything. I took pictures. I took pictures yesterday of all the cars parked there in front of fire hydrants and all the way down the gravel, and no police presence there at all. So I walked down to the park, talked to the, I felt sorry for the, um, security company. What was the name of it? Uh, Pacific Coast Security. There was two of them working there, and they were just overwhelmed. Um, there were so many people in the park that, um, I asked the guys, I said, I thought I saw on the website, they're limited to three hundred people. And he goes, there was such a long line that we just gave up. We tried to contact the police for help. There was no police presence. And so they just opened it up for everybody. He said they stopped counting at three hundred ninety-seven, and they were still coming when I got there. I figured there was probably about five hundred people in the park yesterday. I was given this card when I bought my placard to call Bonny Lake Police Department, the non-emergency line, for any problems we had on one hundred ninety-fourth Avenue. Because last year they were parking on both sides of the street. And called it three hours, busy, 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 nothing. So that's kind of frustrating when you're trying to get a hold of them. I was up there. I ran into the sergeant, and he said that he would try and keep the other side clear where they were parked on the non-sidewalk side. They were halfway on the street. He said, it's fine. Nothing they can do. It, it's not emptying traffic. Well, they're facing both ways, and they're blocking the stop sign. Um, last year we had a bunch of litter thrown. People just bring their garbage and dump it on one hundred ninety-fourth. I was parking my boat, and some guy walked out from the trees. He was back there relieving himself on our trees, on our property. Um, I know my tent's coming up closing. I know the boat trailer parking is temporary while the fields are being built. But the kayakers, paddleboarders, a number of people allowed in the park are not going away. The city needs to come up with a permanent plan. I know the north end of the, um, lake closes their park once, once it reaches capacity. I'm sure that the police department would love a solution because it's too much for three or four officers, crowd control, parking, high speeds of the cars going up and down Bonny Lake Boulevard and our street, one ninety-fourth. Um, just like to thank everybody for listening to the comments.
Well, thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Uh, if you don't mind, I do have a question. Uh, as, and as, I, I have been out of touch, uh, and so I, and I do know that this weekend was probably the first weekend that we've had as far as whole summer, uh, weekend. You were saying that some of the trailers and the cars were parked out into the street? Or, yeah, I mean, how was the, the traffic?
Well, I've got, I've got pictures of it. And were you, um, are you talking Bonny Lake Boulevard or our street, one ninety-four?
Both. Uh, it's just the area in general as far as where boats and trailers?
On Bonny Lake Boulevard, when you come over the hill, they're going down into the park. They are parked down into the ditch, hanging out onto the road. One lady got stuck. I saw him pulling her out because she went too far over the side. But all along the boat launch area, they were all parked there yesterday. And I, I talked to the sergeant. He had them, I don't know if they were all towed or if they made the announcement, but they were all gone by an hour. So, but all day long, I tried to launch my boat, and I, there was no place for me to stage my boat and trailer. And the boat launch was full of kayakers and stuff, so I just had to go around the block. And I just parked my boat. I didn't even go out yesterday. So, but on one hundred ninety-fourth, they park right up to the stop sign that goes into Bonny Lake Boulevard. I'm in there parked right underneath, and they're facing both directions. I mean, they're not facing towards Bonny Lake Boulevard. They're facing the other way too. It's a mess. I've, I've contacted the city where no parking signs on the other side, but all I've gotten is recordings, and I haven't gotten any.
Okay? Well, thank you for coming and speaking, Mr. Charbonneau.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Meredith, uh, is that Kessak? Kessak, yes. All right, Ms. Kessak, you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Meredith Kessak. I also reside on one ninety-fourth. Uh, our address is seven two one eight, one ninety-fourth Avenue East. Uh, I'm also here kind of piggybacking off of what Scott said. We've just got a lot of concerns as residents there. They, they, we understand, and we're okay being gracious to people coming in when it's warm out late. Fine, everybody wants to go play, but like you're saying, the park limits are way past the capacity that's supposed to, like, what? We're just, why aren't we shutting it down when it hits that? I know it's overwhelming, but there's gotta be some sort of a solution here for that. Um, and then the trash too is just unreal. I actually, we moved here three years ago when we had our son. We wanted to get out of big city, and we came down here. We love it. Like, we love the park location. And, and the first couple of years, we kind of let it ride. We're like, yeah, it's hot. Like, people are gonna park. But, but we were clearing bags and bags and bags of trash after every single next day. And I would go and ask people, could you please take your stuff with you? And I was verbally assaulted multiple times. I actually called and filed police records against a couple people. Like, people were coming up and yelling at me and screaming obscenities in front of my son. I was like, can you just not? They're just very disrespectful. You can tell they're not residents of the area because the residents respect it, but there's just gotta be, I, I mean, I don't know what the solution is, but we felt like if we came and talked to you guys, maybe we can work together to come up with something because it is like the whole city's community, not just ours because we live on the street. Um, and it does tend to be a problem. I'm sorry, I don't have much more prepared, but.
No, 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 but, that's fine. No, I certainly appreciate you pointing that out to us, especially the, um, the trash issue, which is something that, that we haven't, that the council have, um, talked about or considered. But that's something that I certainly want to know about.
And the, and the parking issue too, we, the, by recommendation, I have the email from a year back. I forget who specifically I corresponded with, but I had called non-emergency and then sent out the email inquiring how to go about kind of keeping people away from our friends. Like, we've got an access to where we pull out our camper. We have an access to where we pull up our trailer. Like, our driveway too. Cars will just park and they'll overhang. And they suggested getting a tow company these times. So we put up tow signs. We put up road cones to try to block it, and people just will kick them into the ditch and just make their own parking spots there too. There's a complete utter disregard for personal property. Um, and it's just, it's frustrating. And that's all I really have to say.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Thank you very much. All right, do we have anybody else who could go to your work? Okay, um, we, uh, well, I, I, my list has been inaccurate so far. Do we have any correspondence? Okay. Next, we do have our committee reports. Could we start with the finance committee group?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee met today at five o'clock. First, uh, personal, personnel update. Additional letter out for the finalist expected for a PC network specialist on one person. Seat applications for building inspector, planner, and there's a permanent technician, full panel interviews scheduled for July sixth. HR is having a second interview for, uh, thirtieth. Permanent one police officer vacancy. Uh, there's public works maintenance work with three, which is expected to fill July sixteenth. Terminal, public work seasonal laborers, there's twelve hires and two conditional. Uh, we, our business in action items, um, there's AD twenty-two ninety-nine, authorization of additional ARPA funds for public safety building generator replacement. So you might remember that this, uh, was a generator that's for the public safety building, which is also our EOC, which needs to be replaced, uh, and doesn't do the job. And unfortunately, the cost has gone through, who else would COVID, back to us for, I'm basically to get that done. When it is done, it's probably still about a year out, so with this actually goes in. That's kind of what we're looking at. Uh, that was slated for consent in future, and we have minutes. Question, that was our meeting.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Uh, supply chain issues, is that what you were saying? A lot of that. Okay, uh, community, uh, development, please.
Mr. Mayor, we skipped our last meeting to attend to David.
Yes, I will ask about that since the I was proposed, uh, of the, uh, Councilmember Swobodan. Okay, public safety committee group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public safety meeting will be meeting on, uh, July twelfth at three thirty upstairs on the second floor.
Okay. Don't see any other reports. Now we move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the consent agenda, but for item E, which was moved out, has been adopted. And now we move on to the full council, um, issues on the middle housing grant. Okay, Mr. Sullivan again.
This is one of those times we're asking the council for their direction, uh, whether or not they, council would like us to apply for a middle house. Uh, there is a grant opportunity available for the city to apply for a hundred thousand dollar grant that would require the city to take steps to allow for more middle housing types and difference throughout the city. Um, the, some of the grant work that's required, as spelled out in the memorandum, are this work that we would have to do part of our periodic update regardless if we apply for the grant. So there's a racial equity and racial policy work that we have to do as part of our periodic update regardless if you apply for the grant, the grant fund, you will let us pay for that work, council. Um, initially, our estimates for the periodic update are coming in about a half million dollars. Uh, we do know we're gonna get a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant separate from this. It's just for comprehensive plan periodic update. This is another hundred thousand dollars that we could use to fund that effort because there's a lot of overlap between what this grant is requiring and what the periodic update would be requiring. We would be looking at allowing for more different housing types, um, throughout the R one. We've identified a couple strategies, um, in the memo. Uh, the first is, um, restoring some development rights, um, that were removed from property owners back in two thousand eight. Um, there was a big chunk of what was called a turn, turn circulation area that was R two from nineteen eighty-two to about two thousand eight. Um, and when it was down zoned to R one, the R two, at the time, the R two now are similar. Also, Inland Island was zoned R two from nineteen sixty-two to two thousand eight, um, when the council downzoned it to R one. In that case, the planning commission actually recommended not changing the zoning. Uh, the council at the time felt that they were gonna change the zoning anyway. So one of our strategies would be basically reestablishing that R two zoning on those lots that had existed for fifty years before it was changed. Uh, the other one is looking at where we could do townhomes. Uh, townhomes are owner occupied, it's attached homes. Um, I know some council members have spoken with the N B A. They're promoting this ideal too of looking at ways to allow for attached single-family homes, uh, so that people have a lower cost market to get into owner occupied housing units. Um, the theory we're looking at, the strategy we're looking at, would be looking at, um, along collectors, um, high-capacity transit, high-capacity, uh, vehicle lane roads because they serve as a great transition between those or high-density or high-intensity uses of, between commercial and single-family. The townhomes could provide kind of a, a buffer between those two or a transition. Um, the, the other one would be cottage housing ordinance and also looking at some ways to streamline our development review process. The grant doesn't require us to take final adoptive action, but to identify policies and changes that we could make um, as part of our comprehensive plan to, uh, try to achieve the goal of thirty percent of the lots allowing for, um, different housing types. I did ask Congress, do we have to allow for all missing middle on all of them? And they were like, no, it needs to be targeted to your community. So we could do townhomes and that would count. We could do the R two, which allows for a few more unit types. Uh, the cottage housing, I, I believe is in the definition of, um, of miss, of middle housing type. Um, so there's, there's a variety. Cottage housing, there's still one house on one lot, but the lots are typically smaller. The houses are typically smaller, the lots are. So it's a different layout than what you'd see in a traditional subdivision. We would be recommending as part of the grant, policies, changes to our code that we would be putting in place to do that. So you don't have to make all the changes at the completion of the grant. We will be adopting policies that we've got for those changes. We do have to apply for the grant on July fifth. I was trying to figure out how the grant worked. We missed the first deadline. We got a letter of intent. It was non-binding, so it hit July fifth. And because of A W C, this was the only council meeting that we had to bring it all together. I know it's a quick turnaround. It's nature of grants sometimes. Uh, at first, we didn't think we would, we would qualify, but then the more research we did, um, we believe it's a viable option to provide a reasonable, a reasoned approach uh, for providing different housing options throughout the city, um, in a mixture of ways, um, and also hoping to cover the cost of our comprehensive plan, which we're required to update in the next two years at a very hefty price tag. This would, between the two grants, we'd be able to cover about fifty percent of that content. So we're already working on the grant. If the council kind of gives us the nod to move forward, we'll make the application, and we can do the hard work after that.
Where, oh, where are the grants coming from?
The Department of Commerce.
So that'll, uh, not?
No, city.
Okay.
Washington State Department of Commerce.
Okay. July fifth, that's a week from the date. Oh, yes, okay. Yes, Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, question on, anytime you can grant, right? Brants are great. I love them, and I want to give more than all this help with these things. But I'm always concerned about what are the requirements of the grant? And if we don't fulfill those requirements, um, and what is the time frame, I guess, look like from the grant? That we have to do this within?
It would be July, July of next year is the deadline.
For having the codes changed?
No, no, for having, and that's why we didn't think we would make it. So I was emailing the Department of Commerce. We have to have, we can have draft reports, draft policies. They will accept drafts and not final adoption. So they're not, you're not bound to changing all the zoning in the next year. What we would be doing, the way we're structuring the grant, is one deliverable would be the racial equity analysis and policies to address racial, uh, inequality in our zoning codes. That's a requirement of the state law when we do a periodic update. So we're already gonna be working on that. We're gonna make that one a deliverable. A public participation plan on how we're gonna include the public in making these conversations already has to be part of the periodic update. So we already know we're gonna be working on those items. The other ones are going to be a element in our comprehensive plan that talks about, uh, our section specifically dedicated to middle housing and identifying policies of where we want to do that, um, within the city and how we would do that. Uh, exploring the idea of townhomes on those high-capacity travel roads or as buffers between higher-density zones or commercial zones and our residential zones. That would be kind of policy language, and we would provide that draft language to them. This is what we're proposing. Um, and then the other one would be, if the council were so inclined, the draft zoning ordinance for cottage ordinance, that would be how we do cottage ordinance. We wouldn't be adopting the final ordinance, which would be the draft. Um, then the draft changes to the comprehensive plan zoning map related to that R two, going from R two to R one, back to R two, uh, for those areas that we've identified that were R two for years and were down zoned. So that would be all draft stuff. Um, the, what we have to show is the goal of all this work is moving forward to that thirty percent. Uh, because we're not giving them final documents, if we're acting to guarantee that we'll get it. Um, they, I think, realized that, and I specifically asked them. Um, and what they said was the, it has to be, with me and the goal of authorizing it, and that we, they propose, I asked, we have to have a final ordinance, and the, the Department of Commerce explained that the final deliverable does not have to be a draft ordinance, but it could be a housing report with a bunch of changes to the policies, where the city might change the zoning, however, Commerce would suggest a few more deliverables. So that's that middle housing discussion that we're gonna have, the equitable analysis, the cottage zoning ordinance, and this rezone and townhome thing. So we've got about five different deliverables that we want to go with. We would have to do the work. We'd have to get the deliverables. We don't have to make the changes right next year, but we will be having these conversations and have to at least show that we are. Moving forward, even though we went. Moving forward, even though we went out, we were still on grant, on the grant. This makes us less, but, but with the policies and stuff we would have. It's, it's hard, and I understand that, that's why we brought it down.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this pretty much consistent with the housing action plan that we had talked to?
The housing action plan that we, we optionally adopted last year, did identify looking at expanding areas to allow townhomes. So that way, we'd be, we'd also be relying on that to, to make our grant more marketable to the Department of Commerce.
But we're in the right time and place to talk about impact roads and cottages are two things that caught my attention. When you say cottage, is there a definite definition for that?
There are model cottage ordinances, and as we do the work to develop that ordinance, that's what we'd be bringing to councils, what do we define as cottage? What's the square footage? How would people apply for it? So that would all be part of those conversations with the public and the city council as we move forward.
And the same with the high impact roads, or should we?
Yeah, so what I mean by that is we have collectors and arterials that have high volume of cars driving up and down on them, so one thought is to provide, that is an opportunity, like Locust Avenue would be an example. Locust Avenue would be an example where you could provide some townhomes. That road already has churches and fourplexes and apartments on it, so it's not going to be a significant change, but it would be expansion because at some point it does transition.
Okay, uh, number four.
So at the AWC conference, a lot of the local government leaders there were talking about this issue, and one of the things that was brought up is just ADU restrictions. So I guess my, my question is, you know, in, in trying to solve basically this housing issue and things like that, just kind of off the top of your head, and of course, if that's something that we'd have to figure out a little further, but I am curious what the ADU restrictions are and kind of what the allowances are in the city.
Our ADU code is pretty advanced compared to the rest of the state of Washington. We have a few issues, but we're working on those this year. We already received a grant to make some code changes and those code changes come each year. I, I think the big, the two biggest restrictions and challenges that we hear from people with ADUs is, one, the height limit, the, the planning commission a couple of years ago limited it to 18 feet, which means you couldn't put them on top of garages and do the old garage with a apartment above it. So that's one change that we're proposing. And then I think there is the owner occupied or detached ADUs, which is always a political hot potato, and there are people in favor of that, and people against it. But those are two biggest restrictions, and maybe purpose lot coverage and parking. And we already, we're already working on those. On the other side of the coin, the city does a charge, transportation impact fees for ADUs, does not charge water or sewer connection charges for ADUs, as long as they use the same meter as the primary residence. So if you build an ADU and use the same water meter as the main house, then even if it's a detached structure, you can still do that. You don't pay a water connection charge, you don't pay a sewer connection charge, you don't pay a park impact fee, you don't pay a transportation impact fee. School impact fees outside of our authority, so it's up to the school district. But most of those fees are not required as part of an ADU. So we're, a lot of those conversations here about ADUs, we've already kind of addressed so that the cost is much lower. We've got a few challenges on the regulatory side that we'll be addressing. With, as I said, with the height, the parking, and I think there's a weird, a weird thing in the water that we're going to. We're pretty far out on the edge of leading that, creating the standards that would allow for ADUs.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Oh, Councilmember McLean.
So thanks, Jason, you did a nice job, I appreciated your memo, I can see that you're concerned about our perspective in maintaining that character of Bonnie Lake's single family residence and all the people that commute off of the hill every day, and so I appreciate that. And the, the question I have is, you know, we take the grant, we run the policies, we go through, we, we have to take the comprehensive plan, and we make a, basically one or two zoning changes that where we go from R1 to R2 out in, along Church Lake, is that basically what's going to happen?
I, I think the big changes you would see are that Church Lake area, at least under our proposal, the Church Lake area and Inland Island would go back to R2. The areas, the properties in the R1 would stay R1 along collectors or arterials or minor arterials. And what would happen is there would just be a provision added to R1, that if you have property that fronts on that roadside, in addition to doing your standard detached homes, you could do townhomes. So it would stay R1, there would just be a provision based on location, geographical location, to allow for that additional use, and we'd have to figure out how that would work from a density and design standpoint, but that would be the second one. And then the third one would be a holding cottage ordinance that would apply anyone in the R1 with specific standards to address those issues of putting smaller homes on smaller lots. But that would be a, that would be a separate regulatory box that people could elect to take advantage of, they wouldn't be required to. So if you're doing a subdivision, you could follow the traditional method, or you could do a cottage method. And we'd have to write the ordinance in such a way that those things are out of.
None of this would supersede existing HOA agreements that limit subdivision?
No, we can't, we cannot, we have an active discussion right now with, with homeowners. No, we cannot by law, if an HOA prohibits something, if it's on the final plat, we have an issue. However, if it's not on a final plat, it's not that it supersedes, it's a civil matter between the property owner and, so we're not the enforcement agent for those bylaws, but that would be a civil matter between the two property, between the two entities, the property owner and, and the, and the HOA. The only exception, as I said, is in Church Lake. There's just, there's a plat where on the plat it specifically says that that has to be approved by the HOA. That's the only one that we require them to get HOA approval before they sub like. That's a very unique situation, typically it would be a civil matter between. But that's true with everything, we have, we have poses that you can do sheds, and HOA says you can't do a shed. We'll still give you the permit for the shed, but you may have a lawsuit between you and the entity. But those are different issues, but yeah, it's, it's a very weird world I live in sometimes.
So one last question is regarding the public involvement. This is going to affect somebody's personal property rights, right? So are we, is there a way for us to recoup that? That's going to take time and money from you and your staff to make sure that everybody's given a reasonable amount. Are we, are we going to make sure we have enough to reach out? So if we change the zoning from R1 to R2 in Church Lake area, I would expect us to try to make a reasonable effort to contact most of the affected property owners to say that this is happening and.
So under the grant, we are going to be doing a public participation plan, and how we're going to engage the public, not only the property owners, but the surrounding community as a whole on that. And it's part of our larger effort, it's part of the comprehensive plan to have a community dialogue about how we would be building community for the next 10 years. And so the grant, this grant will help pay for the development of that plan and the implementation of that plan. And one of the things that we've talked about as part of that outreach is, there's a number of things, websites and stuff like that, but one thing that we're trying to get in that plan is at least one mailer to every property owner in the city. We did this last time, we did the periodic update, that says, we're doing a periodic update of our comprehensive plan, if you want more information, here's a website to sign up to receive input. It's costly to do that a lot, but we at least, in the 2015 update, I think you received , or who replied to this, that we mailed about, I think we mailed out like 6,000 postcards. This is, we're doing a comprehensive plan update, here's how you sign up to receive email notifications. The zoning one, we would definitely send another specific letter to them saying that here's our zoning, and true, A to B, and comment, just like we did with the RC5 rezone a couple of years ago.
And so what was the response to that, the 6,000 mailers?
Well, that's how we got the 450 people signed up on our email. So we actually had a really robust, that's how, the council replied to us, and his family, and a number of people. I think we had five or six public meetings, and we had a variety of responses, it's hard to remember exactly, everything seven years ago. I do remember Debbie McDonald and I sitting upstairs cutting postcards out and getting them in the mail, and the city cards getting mad at us that we're using the false postage on postage machines and, and it forgets back. But no, I think, I think we did have a lot of outreach and, and discussions, because there are opposing viewpoints, there's lots of things to solve, we're trying to understand the community that we live in, but also how do we make that community more affordable to more people that want to live in the community? So it's, it's a balance.
Boy, those hands, oh, Councilmember, member four.
So as a new council member, I, I just want clarification, so if we're going from R1 to R2, are we actually making this more restrictive or less restrictive zoning? Are we allowing for?
They would be, they would be entitled to more development options. So under R1, you have single family home, possibly ADU. R2, you have duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhomes. So people that would go to the R2 would actually have more development opportunity and potential upon their property.
Okay, I like that.
And the Tarragon property, what is that?
Because of the lawsuit, I'm just going to let that one stay, and we will deal with that at a whole different date.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Oh, yes, Councilmember McLean.
I, I would just like to point out to a councilperson, Fulton, that what that basically says is that some, if they changed your neighborhood to R2, that your neighbor could put a fourplex right next to your house.
Oh, okay.
That is true.
Okay.
So are we needing some, we don't need a vote, but we at least need like a thumbs up. So why? Because I don't want to go through the, all right, well, then we're going to have to do with the next 72 hours to write this grant application and get a load of the water.
Had the discussion, all in favor, say aye. To, to applying for the grant. I mean, can we just do it?
How about, yeah, or a thumbs up.
Thumbs up. I think we're just going to send this one away. Make a vote on something that's not on either. If we had any votes, let's put that on. No one's opposed, so there you go.
We'll, we'll move forward, let's just see what happens.
All right.
Thank you, Jason.
So let's move on to the full council issues, which is the middle housing grant, and let's move to item E, which will move off of the consent agenda, and that's where we treat that one.
This is item AB 22-94, which is ordinance D 2294. The council motion would be to amend ordinance numbers 9.01, 0.010, and 9.03, 0.010 of municipal court code, and be filled in the chapter 9.12.
So move. Second is, okay, do we have any discussion? Councilmember McLean.
Yeah, this, this topic involves restricting the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Bonnie Lake. It actually is not really adding any new restrictions, but I felt like it was necessary to at least give the council a chance to, to talk about it. I think the important fact here is that the, we're coming into compliance with the state code, and there's really not a lot of wiggle room about how to do things, but it still is basically stating that, and the council chambers are no longer open carry. And am I correct in, in assuming that they can open carry today? So we are going to take the capability to open carry in the council chambers away, and I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that. I don't think we have an option to say no to that, but, which is unfortunate. I, I don't really understand the value of this, and I personally think that it's, I don't under, yeah, I just don't understand the value, right? Okay, that's all I have?
Councilmember Paul.
I echo the same sentiments as Councilmember McLehman's. Of course, I, I understand also that this is coming down from the legislature, making rules, again, that affect cities and just, yeah, the Second Amendment. However, yeah, it does sound like there is no option because of the power of the legislature to do more to our city if we were to not comply.
Okay, do we have any further discussion?
Okay, Deputy Mayor Carter. I, I just thought of, I'd bring up the typical question that Councilmember McLehman's friends have, is what happens if we fail?
I, I asked that of Gina, I don't know if you can come up and ask or answer that. It was basically the state has some pull against us that can hold us against them.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, come on.
Come on.
Just state your name and address.
Just talk real loud, the better.
Hi, I'm Gina Burke, title Deputy City Attorney- prosecutor. So the big thing this is requiring, it's a misdemeanor for the first offense and then a gross misdemeanor after that, irregardless of what council's action is today. And the big thing is making the code a compliance, and then there's a requirement of putting up signs. You know, theoretically, if the city's not compliant, there's two potential things. One is that the state attorney general can always, you know, show up and, you know, not make life pleasant for the city because we're out of compliance with state law. And then the second thing would be if signs are not posted and the city is not basically in compliance with state law, if heaven forbid something did happen, say at a council meeting, you know, potentially the city could be open to liability due to being out of compliance with state law.
No, the liability part I understand, the second part being the ADU, they can't, won't make life pleasant. What are some of the things that the ADU office could?
How much time do you have?
I mean, I mean, in theory, I mean, the city could be fined, I mean, for not being compliant, so.
I like it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Swobodan.
Yeah, by far not being an expert in this area, but I'm wondering, you know, the recent Supreme Court decisions, do they play into the state law thing? Because this is the, this is the city following the state law, right? So is there, you know, with the Supreme Court recently breaking down the New York State or was it city regulations?
Yeah, that was for issuing concealed permits.
Right, for issuing, and, and you know, clearly stating the constitutional right theory.
And this, this, well, that was for concealed. Oh, for New York State concealed, yeah, and this does not affect concealed, strictly open.
Right, so a person still has the right, if they have a lawful concealed and carry permit, to conceal, to carry a concealed weapon. And the New York case from the US Supreme Court, I don't think affects this because that had, as councilmembers already said, about issuing the concealed and carry permit. At this point, the state law is still valid and still in effect, it has not been struck down by that Supreme Court case.
Oh, Councilmember Paul.
We are an open carry state, correct?
Yes.
So they're restricting where the citizens can open carry in public?
Correct, so in.
I can make one clarification. I don't believe our state law says we are an open carry state. I don't think it states that we are not.
Wait, I'm sorry, I may misunderstood.
There, there's nothing in state law that says open carry. There's nothing in state law that says we cannot open carry.
Right, there's, there is case law that says we are an open carry state. So, but this is saying you can't open carry in, for example, the council chambers or in the council meeting area. So there is, the US Supreme Court has said in basically commentary in cases that there can be reasonable restrictions under the Second Amendment. For example, just as there are restrictions on the First Amendment, and specifically schools and government buildings have been noted as areas where the Supreme Court thinks there can be reasonable restrictions.
So I, I guess my question would be, if the state has already decided that this is an issue, and they're going to restrict that, and we're just coming into compliance with that, why do we have to do anything? Can't we just say the state did it and thus not do, not follow through with our part of it? Just like if, if I was a police officer here and I arrested, I could arrest them if they law, have to do a coordinate.
Right, this is updating our code because we had stuff in our code before regarding weapons in council meetings, and so this is just bringing it to basically not contradict or be confusing regarding the state law. And then there's a requirement of posting. And then there's a requirement of posting signs.
So if, if a person believes that this is not a correct law, you know, those who do the legal proceedings, you go through the court system against it, then they would be suing or have a lawsuit with the city, Bonnie Lake and whoever else they wanted to, right? As opposed to like the council member, um, points out about if we don't have this particular law, then we follow state law. Are, are we opening the city up to the liability of being sued as opposed to following the state?
So the city, I mean, basically has to follow state law. This is just making, updating the code because there could be conflicts between what's currently in the code to what's in the state law. Because of, there were, under current city, and I don't know if I understood, under certain current city code, it talks about weapons in council meetings. And so this is basically just saying the city's adopting the new RCW and then it was just cleaning up the language regarding weapons in the courtroom.
Oh, we, uh, Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Dana. I know you're just trying to clarify. We're not, we're not, you're not on track. I know you're just trying to clarify, you know, and help us in terms of, I really appreciate that. Um, I guess my question is just to the council, um, you know, in regards to, and this is, this is not requiring an answer, but just for us to think as council members in the future, that if this continues from the state level, you know, where they, they are asking us to do more and more, that really is against, um, a constitutional freedom. I guess my question is just when do we then push back? And so, um, just a thought, yeah.
Well, that was, oh, Councilmember McLean.
Yeah, so I did have a question about the adoption because there was some language that I, I didn't quite understand how binding it was, that any further changes, will we automatically, so it's a state? Are we changing our code so that we, so that we will just automatically adopt the next change that the state makes?
Correct. That's kind of standard when adopting RCWs, just in case there's minor changes down the road that we don't have to then, you know, do all this formal process over yet.
Oh, Councilmember Paul.
So it's my understanding that the Second Amendment says that the citizen's right to bear arms shall not be infringed upon. So at what point are we out of compliance with the Constitution, which is actually the law of the land? It's my understanding that there can be no law that is, uh, less strict than the Constitution or more strict. It can't be repugnant of the Constitution. So we will be out of compliance with the law of the land if we start posting signs restricting people's ability to carry, which shall not be infringed on. So I'm having a problem posting signs and telling people that they can't carry openly when it's basically an open carries state, but, oh, but you can't carry it here, you can't have it here, and you can't have it here. And if you walk in here knowingly with a gun on you, um, then we can prosecute you. This seems unconstitutional. And I know it is, so I, I don't know.
Are you okay with carrying a dart? Because that's also restricted.
Right, but that's, that's also against the Constitution.
Well, and, but again, you're talking about federal constitution, but Washington state constitution. And that's basically what governments are with. But then the Tenth Amendment actually governs. You know, as far as how we go, but that we are not in the time or place to have constitutional law.
Yeah, no, we're not. I'm just, I'm just, I'm concerned because when we're infringing rights, then there's always either way, you know, we could be in trouble with the state or we can be in trouble with our citizens. So which ones, which, where, where do we really want to be? Because I would much rather be in trouble with the state than be in trouble with my citizens.
Well, do we have any further discussion? Oh, okay, Madam Park.
I'm really glad for Dana. I just want to explain that currently in our code, these code numbers is saying that we are following the RCW. So all that she is trying to do is update it because now we have an old RCW that has changed. It's pretty much the same thing as what we already have. We're just updating it to match with the current RCW.
We have to prosecute?
I believe that would be up to our prosecutor. Okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay, well, let's take it to a vote. Hey, ordinance number D 2294, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bonnie Lake, here's County Washington, amending ordinance numbers 9.01.010 and 9.03.010, the Bonnie Lake Municipal Code, and repealing chapter 9.12 of the Bonnie Lake Municipal Code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? How many nays did we have? We have three nays, or four nays. Okay, so we do have four nays and we had three, so we had three ayes, four nays. So we are not adopting. We are keeping the original language of the, of what we have now.
Yeah, can we bring this back up again in another meeting?
Sure.
It might be out of compliance. It's liability of our, our city.
Yeah.
Put this back on the public safety agenda meeting or the 12th?
So what is the, uh, there is a policy that says when we can readdress this issue,
You can move for reconsideration at the next, uh, regular meeting. However, the party that prevailed has to make that motion. So a lot of the 40s have voted no, we have to make a motion to re...
Would that be a support motion at the meeting?
Or it could be tonight as well. I believe the way the council rules reads, it can be at the meeting tonight or the next frame of meeting.
You can do it tonight. It just has, it has to be the last item. It's the last item.
Well, it's Tom and I, but yeah, they were, they were.
Angela and I were not present at that meeting.
Can I, can I make a motion to send it back to the public safety?
Don't secure it.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. That'll be on the 12th agenda for public safety.
All right. And we're doing a closed session, um, so seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thanks very much.